I'd like to call the Finance Committee of the Quincy City Council to order. And I'd ask the Clerk of Committees to read their role.
Counselor Andronico.
President.
Counselor Kane.
President.
Counselor Debona.
President.
Counselor Harris.
President.
Counselor Mahoney.
President.
Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Palmucci. Chairman Phelan.
President.
Six members, you have a quorum.
At this time, I'm going to read in the open meeting law language to be read it. I'm going to read that in. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. Okay? All right. So we started a historic moment, our first committee hearing in two, over two years. And the one item we have on the agenda is the appropriation of $16,400,000 for the Pine Hill Cemetery expansion and reservation. And I'll start off with Dave Murphy, Commissioner of Natural Resources, to start off the program. And I know we have other people who are going to be coming up. There'll be a slideshow and go into that. And then I will be opening it up for questions from any members of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be back before you in this great hall to present a very exciting and historic project for our cemetery department. Just based on background, so folks on the council and at home, understand the cemetery department oversees six cemeteries. We have three historic cemeteries, the Hancock Cemetery right next door, the Snug Harbor Cemetery in Germantown, and the Old Sales Home Cemetery off of Fennel Street in Wallaston. Our three active cemeteries, a Hall Cemetery in West Quincy, often confused as part of St. Mary's Cemetery, but it is a separate municipal cemetery. We have the Historic Mount Wallaston Cemetery. And the cemetery that we're here to discuss tonight, we have the Pine Hill Cemetery, which is on Willard Street as you head into Braintree. Many people often confuse that as Braintree or Blue Hill Cemetery, but it is a municipal cemetery owned and operated by the city of Quincy. Pine Hill is 46-plus acres adjacent to the Blue Hills. It was purchased by the city in 1953 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the purpose of a municipal cemetery. It had been expanded through the years as needed to accommodate the burial needs of the residents of Quincy, up until the late 1990s, when a municipal expansion project was halted by the state out of concern for endangered species habitat. The timber rattlesnake, of which I hope none of us ever actually encounter, is habitat area throughout the Blue Hills, but including portions of the Pine Hill Cemetery. So for the last almost 20 years, the city has been working with the state to properly settle and earn permits to develop a portion of the Pine Hill Cemetery. You may recall that this body about three years ago voted on a conservation restriction for 15 acres, which allowed for the development of seven remaining acres up at Pine Hill Cemetery. And that's what we're here before you tonight to get authorization to do. Tonight's proposal is the most significant cemetery expansion that this city's done in decades. It'll add over 14,000 burial spaces. It'll also include the city's first cremation niches to maximize some of the challenges that the landscape presents, but also to provide additional options to residents as well. Our plots are only available to Quincy residents. Municipal Finance, I know, has a chart which will show the revenue that is anticipated to be generated from this project, including the borrow costs, which will, borrowing costs, which are, will exceed the request that's before you this evening. So the revenue generated from this project will cover the cost of doing the project. Lastly, you know, someone once asked me, you know, why does city government get involved in the cemetery business? And I can tell you that having local cemeteries is critical to the grieving process. You know, many of the visitors that we have in our cemeteries tend to be elderly folks that would have lost a spouse or sibling or other family member. And the peace of mind that they have, they can go someplace local. Not everybody has the ability to drive down to Bourne or to other municipalities and distances. So having local cemeteries is a critical part, I think, of the fabric of our community. What we also noticed is that particularly in Quincy, our cemeteries are historic sites. They've become parks in some cases during the pandemic. When the gyms were closed, walkers, joggers, people on bikes, et cetera, in a respectful manner. And, you know, anyone that would walk through Mount Wallaston would say it's also an art museum. Some of the granite work in that museum is some of the finest in the world. So our cemetery is an important part of the fabric of our community, and that is the goal with this expansion enhancement up at Pine Hill Cemetery. We're trying to create a location that will be an appropriate final resting place for 14,000 Quincy residents. We've worked with a number of folks in the community, including the funeral business, to make sure that the different cultural perspectives that exist in the city were incorporated into our design. And I think the design we have will be attractive when we get into our first pre-need sales of cemetery plots. In close to two decades, we'll have a cemetery that people will be eager to purchase plots in. So before I turn it over from our project team, I do want to recognize our Cemetery Board of Managers, who has been instrumental in the planning and design process. Our board chair is Paul Moriello. On the board is Susan Kindergarten, George Bouchard, Dennis Guerin, James Nichols, John Norton, Linda Perchod. And I'd also like to thank General Fullman, Scott Logan. Without further ado, to talk about our project, we have our team from Woodard and Curran. They have built an excellent design team with a number of partners. And on behalf of Woodard and Curran, I'd like to turn it over to Project Lead Scott Salvucci to talk about the specifics of the engineering and design project. Thank you.
So as Commissioner Murphy mentioned, my name is Scott Salvucci, Project Manager with Woodard and Curran. And I'm excited to talk about this project. It's one that we've been working on for a couple of years now. We did some master planning last year, and it's really come to fruition now, where we've been able to pull together the design with, as Dave mentioned, a number of great partners. We've been working with landscape architects, a local sculptor, stone sculptor, Monte Ackerman on some of the fountain and artwork enhancements. And looking forward to really showing you what we have. I think we can get started with an overview, summary of information already provided to you leading up to this meeting. So I think you already have a lot of this information in your packet. The layout, the expansion area, the existing grounds, summary of the enhancements and what we have proposed. In subsequent slides, I'll get into a little bit more detail of each of those improvements. So I'll get to the summary, and like I said, we'll have some more detailed focused areas of those features. This is a quick snapshot, a layout of the grounds. This is probably one of the best layouts that we can provide that show the whole existing and expansion ground area, which equates to about 25 or so acres. Seven and a half acres are going to be the expansion area, which is going to be the top-left corner of the photo. The existing grounds are the lower area, what you might already understand the layout to be. What we're looking at here is the creation of about 3,500 double-depth pre-buried vaults, which are the typical in-ground burials that you're, that you're probably envisioning that have been used across the city for decades now. Where pre-buried vaults are going to be concrete vaults that are already put in place during the construction process, so it'll help ease long-term operations and maintenance. And about 3,000 columbarium niches, which will, which will house cremation urns. We also have welcome center improvements and entrance gate improvements at the Willard Street entrance. So there's proposed new office building at that location. And then conversely, the Chigatobet Road entrance, where the existing office building currently is, that will be removed to make way for a new committal building with a fountain, boulder fountain as a water feature. And again, enhancements to the entrance fencing there. We also have, exactly how it sounds, a pergola gathering area with columbarium walls, and that's going to be in the expansion area. So that's in the top-left corner as well, that area's going to be in the expansion. A veterans memorial wall and columbarium wall, which will go in the existing veterans area. And then a seating area within the existing grounds. So kind of spreading out these enhancements across the expansion, the veterans, and the existing grounds as best we could. So as I mentioned, a couple zoomed-in views, examples of proposed burial types. On the left are the double-depth pre-buried vaults. Those are the typical caspian interments. As I mentioned, very little operations and labor required to perform burial services with these. Very practical. Columbarium niche walls on the right-hand side, and those provide interment for cremations, as I mentioned, and two urns would fit in per each niche. The Willard Street entrance, you can see that there's going to be proposed new fencing, landscaping, and then also the welcome center will be in the background, which will really kind of be in front of the existing maintenance garage. So that will, that will act as a nice entrance feature for really the residents' entrance from Quincy, since where this is located on the Quincy-Braintree border, most residents are coming in through the Willard Street entrance, and they'll be able to access the proposed office building. The Chigatobet Road entrance, again, new fencing, staying in the same aesthetics as the Chigatobet, as the Willard Street entrance. Committal building in the background, and it's, well, I'll have a couple of different views, but that would be the cascading kind of boulder fountain that you can kind of see coming down the hillside there. So in the next slide, we'll show you. On the left is the sculptor's rendering of what the boulder fountain will look like. So kind of working into the topography that's existing, a little bit of a high-functioning stream at the top, kind of really coming down to the lower level of the topography, where it's going to be a little bit more of a tranquil stream crossing with, with kind of some ponded areas. And then on the right there, that's, that's one of his installed, previously installed fountains. So it gives you a kind of a thought of what types of stones he uses and kind of the cascading nature of the fountain. As I mentioned, a pergola gathering area with columbarium walls, that's going to be proposed in the expansion area, exactly as it sounds and as it looks. A nice pergola with some seating area for reflection and the columbarium walls, which will be double-sided. So there's, there's a nice artistic look to these as you can walk around both sides and visit the niches on both sides of these walls, which really helps to accomplish a lot of interment locations in a very small area. The veterans wall, this is again into the existing grounds, the existing veterans area. This will provide an area for reflection and just a little bit more of an enhanced memorial for this veterans area. And then in the, in the background to the left, the trees are kind of blocking in at the moment, but there's a retaining wall to help work with the topography of the challenging landscape, which will also be faced with a columbarium wall for veterans. So that'll provide niche, columbarium niche space for cremation urns. In the existing grounds, there's a seating area for reflection with enhanced landscaping benches. And the next slide here is really just to bring us back to that first overview. Hopefully, you can read it if you can. I'll be able to maybe point some things out for you. But these are the highlights of where the enhancements are, are within the existing grounds, within the proposed expansion area, and, you know, really trying to enhance not only the expansion area, maximizing burial spaces, but also help with the, with the aesthetics, the artwork, and the sense of place and gathering areas for reflection. That is, with that, I'll pause for questions.
Any councils have questions? A couple of questions I wanted to ask. I see basically in doing this, I wanted to know if, when you're doing the, I don't know if this is for you or for...
Commissioner.
Probably Dave, because I'm, it's more, I've got all the things about how much is coming in and all that. Right now, we don't have that amount of money coming in, obviously. And is that because it's that just need only or...
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Right now, we have immediate need, which is obviously deceased. So working through the funeral homes to bury Quincy residents that are passed away, or folks that had bought lots many years ago when we did the pre-need sales and have been handed down through generations. Those are the burials you see today. Our intention, were this project to move forward and be approved, to go pre-need probably as soon as later on this year. And I think the, there would be a tremendous demand out there, especially because this is really the last spot that the city has for cemetery space. So I think the lack of supply is going to create a pretty substantial demand for, for these plots.
So you'll be, and it will be just for Quincy residents?
Correct.
Okay. Because I know some cemeteries, they brought people in from outside and they run the cemetery and everything like that. So I think if you don't, it should be for Quincy residents. And that's obviously what it is. Okay. Anybody? Counselor Mahoney.
So anyone open to all questions, or is it just to the presentation? Just, I don't know if there's another part of your presentation.
Well, anything.
Okay, just anything really. So could we just take a step back? I just want some clarification. So in 2020, did we put 4,000 new spaces in the Pine Hill Cemetery for $750,000? It was reported in the newspaper.
I don't think it was quite 4,000, but there was a minor expansion to buy us some time. Unfortunately, the reality of the last few years is we've seen an exponential increase in the need for burial space. I'm not an expert on the death rate or anything else like that, but our, the amount of monthly burials that we're doing has increased dramatically in the last couple of years. So we were running out of space, so we've done a minor expansion to buy us some time to get to this point.
So for those 4,000 spaces, and I understand that, and I'm certainly not trying to be... Difficult about that?
Sorry, the number's closer to about 500.
It's 500, so it's not, so where did we get the 4,000? Where did, sorry, I just started like, sounded like I'm not screaming. It sounded like I was screaming. Where did we get the, the reporter get the 4,000, I guess?
Accurate.
So that's drastically different. So and then in total, when we're talking about the 16.4, again, again, there's, whether it was reported on a podcast or in the newspaper, and it's been, it's been misreported. So one, one portion's saying it's 8,000, other places it's saying 13,000, 16,000, I think I saw today 16,000. And then just now in your presentation, you said 13,000 burials, 3,500 niches, and 3,500 double, could you just explain that to me?
Yeah, I think, I think some of the confusion, if I can through, Mr. Chairman, is that a single grave actually is two burials, and same thing with the cremation niche. So sometimes when you look at raw numbers, they're not, you know, you could say we're creating X amount of graves, but there are X amount of plots and X amount of people. So the other part of this project, and Scott can probably speak to it more, is the topography is going to create certain challenges for us that we're going to have to adapt to. So, you know, whether it's the slopes on the backside, the actual number will be refined. We have a pretty good handle of what it's going to look like based on the engineering that they've done. But I think the numbers before you tonight are as close as we can get to this point in the project coming up with an accurate figure.
Could you confirm those numbers once again?
Yeah, so actually, as Commissioner was presenting, I tried to make a mental note to myself, but he said 14,000, and I would say that is probably the number to go with.
14,000 is burial spots or niches?
Interment locations total. So, so yeah, so in my, you're right. So in the first slide, 3,500 double-depth pre-buried vaults, so that's 7,000 interment locations. 3,000 niches, which would be 6,000 interment locations, so that's 13,000. But that doesn't take into account the areas that don't have pre-buried vaults. So like the veterans location and a couple other areas that don't have the pre-buried vaults. So the number 14,000 is more accurate.
So when you buy a lot, though, are you buying it, is it, when you're buying a double, so whether it's a niche or a vault, what's the cost for that? Not to be, you know, because there's a cost of this project, and then there's a cost of what you're selling.
So the general cost, you're buying the actual lot. So you'll get $1,200 for a single lot, which will get you two burials. You pay a perpetual care fee, which is the ongoing maintenance of the cemetery, which is a $1,000 fee. You have to pay for deed, which is a minor cost of $2,500. Then when you go to use the lot, when you have a burial, you have what they call an opening or interment charge, which is another, I think it's 1,100 or so.
So you're talking about...
And that would occur twice for a single lot, because you'd have to theoretically put two people in this. You'd have to have that interment charge both times that you use that plot.
So that $1,100 would be twice.
Correct.
So, so the total cost is 22, like 30, is it 30? I'm not sure my math very quick, because I don't have my glasses on. So 1,200, $2,200 for a double lot, and then the $1,100 every time, when you have a burial.
Probably 44 and change for a single. Now, the other factor here will be that if you buy a single lot, you're allowed two double-deep burials, but you are allowed one cremation burial if you need that as well, too. So that would be an additional opening fee. So a solid number, what most people use, would be in the 4,400 range. Theoretically, you could go up to 55 if they use that third option, if they have a cremation urn, if they want to bury along with the two burial vaults that they have.
So again, I'm just going off what was reported in the paper, and this was, you know, obviously something that we wanted to get out before we had this meeting. And it just seems, you know, the mayor said, you know, the sale of lots is associated with burial charges. Lot at Pine Hill costs 1375 and a $700 opening fee. And now the proposed expansion, when it's finished, the new lot cost will be 22, 25 with an opening fee increase of $1,100. So is, is those numbers correct, and that's for a single, or is that for double? I don't mean to be difficult, I'm just, the way this is being presented, and I guess I'm just used to things being broken out, and like the cost of this and the, the different pieces that we have here, we're just getting, you know, to do all this, it's going to be $12 million, and to do the, the building, it's going to be another three. So there's your 16.5, let's call it a day and get it going. And I don't see it broken out in a way that I can get behind this, and it seems very, very expensive. But at the same time, I understand it's a need. I'm certainly not here to say that this isn't something the city should be doing, but I just don't think that the way we're presenting it tonight for the taxpayers is really going to be, I can't actually get behind it the way it's being presented. And even the numbers that we're just presenting, and I thank you very much, Eric Mason, because I did ask for numbers today. This is just showing me how we're going to be paying off the bond. However, the way you're explaining it, Dave, isn't really helping me break down, break down that bond. It's, the assumption is that we're going to be able to sell all of these and, you know, in a short time, you know, within, before, before you, and it says there's a 10-year lifespan of this, that you think this will be all sold out in 10 years, but we'll be paying for this for 20 years. And that was in the paper, too. So I'm just trying to, my whole thing is that I think this is something we have to do, but the way we're presenting it, and I'm, and this is the Finance Committee, I'm not saying depths of numbers here. I'm not saying anything that's making me feel like I can get behind it. And, you know, I'm going to let my other counselors talk, but I almost feel like we need to table it and go back and really actually look at the numbers and really break this down so that we can get behind it. And maybe there's things that we don't need, because this seems to be very extravagant in some ways, too. And the last question I'll ask, Dave, is it looks like the, the trees have already been taken down at Pine Hill? And I just want to know if that's been done? Has there been clearing done at Pine Hill already?
Three, Mr. Chairman. There were some pine trees that were taken down as part of the preliminary expansion. Now, a lot of those pine trees were in very bad shape.
I'm not by any means suggesting that, I'm just, I'm asking if this...
There was, there was some tree removal. We don't anticipate any more tree removal. In fact, we hope to be planting some additional trees as part of the expansion project.
So again, this is a project that's come before us, and the areas that you're talking about have already been clear-cut, whether they're the reasons why, it doesn't matter. But we've also talked about statues that are already being pre-done. In the presentation, we mentioned somebody who's already doing statues. The budget hasn't been approved. We're already creating the statues that we may or may not, as a council, say that might be not something that we want to do if it's already being done. I don't know how far they are, but it makes me very concerned that we're actually starting projects before we're actually having them, before this body to decide. And I believe you did say somebody that's...
Yeah, I'm sorry if I presented as statues are being worked on. I just meant that the stone sculptor has some sketches that he designed.
It's the sketches, okay. Well, I was a concern, because it sounded like you were saying it was already being done. I was like, well, I hope not, because this hasn't been approved.
No, and the only thing he's really looking at right now, there's, there's artwork that's hopeful.
That's fine. So you're just talking renderings that are being done. And that's perfectly okay. I just want to make sure that we set that correctly, because honestly, when we're doing these types of presentations, we don't know. And the problem is, is it gets said, and then we don't know, we withstand. And I do know that when I went, I did go up and take a look at it, and I took time to go and look at other cemeteries, too. I went out to Westwood, I talked to other people and how they went about doing it, and how other councils basically had the same problem with. We want something that's going to be perfect and beautiful, but we can only afford what we can afford. And is this, is this too much? I really do feel as though this might be, you know, a level up more than what we need. Personally, you know, I have family that's buried at Pine Hill. I have family that's buried in different cemeteries. I go to visit them, but I can tell you that I'm going to visit them. I'm not going to visit the pergola. And maybe on that day, it's going to give me comfort, but it's not necessarily going to give me comfort for me just to go up and visit it. And it's just a concern that I have. And I know, like, in Westwood, they were going to have a fountain, they were going to have a bunch of different things, and they cut that back. And it's still beautiful. It is still absolutely beautiful. And that's a community that, you know, is definitely a community that has the money to be able to do it. So with that, I do have other questions, but I'll, I do personally feel as though this is a finance meeting. I was expecting to see far more detail in what we're, what we're getting and how we're spending it. So to break that out, I'm sure you came up with that number of that $12.5 million with all of the work you've done, that's bundled up. I'm sure you could break it down so we could see exactly what we're spending our money on. And maybe then, I know that some of my other counselors like to look at the fine details and those things.
There's some details. So when we looked at that number for construction of the expansion area, the earthwork, the landscape, and the fountains, the artwork, this is how we, we looked at breaking it down. And you can really see that, that the largest number is that earthwork and rock removal. And as Commissioner Murphy mentioned, this is, this is the last area to expand the city's cemetery grounds into. And there's a reason it's left for the last, is because it's a very challenging landscape to work in. Pine Hill, it is quite a hill, so that's why we're looking at retaining walls, to really help level the slopes to accessible walking grounds as much as possible. The earthwork and rock removal, there's quite a bit of ledge out there. If you, if you have walked it, you'll see a lot of rock exposed out there that we really want to be able to remove that, get down to the depths of proper burials. And in the areas that there's just too much ledge, that's where we're looking at the pergola area, where there's just too much ledge to really cost-effectively break through all that. We've decided to put, you know, a plaza, a pergola gathering area on top of it, and go up with the burial spaces and use those columbarium niches to our benefit. Pre-buried vaults are a number there, columbarium walls, the hardscape enhancements, the paving, the paving is, those are probably half and half in a sense. Landscaping, and then the boulder fountain and artwork. And that's, you know, with the construction and materials.
Yeah, I still think, and I appreciate that, but on the package that we received, it so nicely was omitted, that nice little numbers that you have down the bottom, but it was omitted in my package that I sent.
Yeah, I received that comment, so I added it.
Yeah, so I find it, I just find it to be very, and it still isn't broken out as far as I can, as far as I'm concerned. It's nice that you can kind of bundle it up again. You broke your 12.75 down into this, and like, oh, it's going to cost us a change in this and this. I think there's ways we can value engineer these things. $16.4 million for the amount of work we're getting and the types of things we're, we're looking at, and what were the materials that we're looking at. If you were told, you're, you're, you were told to go back to the drawing board to cut out, you know, you know, we want to get this down to, you know, $8 million, I'm sure there'd be ways you could come back and give us something just as beautiful with just as many of the things that we have. I just, I know for a fact that this is just very, it's, it's extraordinary, but at the same time, is it something that we absolutely need in those ways? And you can come back and say it's the earth and it's the rock moving different things, but there's ways that you can landscape and do other things to be able to get that to, to cut those costs and bring those costs down. It's just, again, I've, I've talked to other communities who had similar projects, not necessarily this organization that's in front of me, but other organizations that came in with very high numbers, and they settled somewhere much lower. And it was in the recent, in the recent years. I know that this is something that's happening throughout all communities. You're running out of space. The other thing is, when you, when you do sell all of these spaces, Mr. Murphy, one of the things that this is, is that you can put these spaces in, and it, it covers the cost of the loan, but eventually, eventually when they're all filled up, like St. Mary's, I don't think there's any space at St. Mary's, you still have to man, man to take care of those, because, but there's no spaces to go in, so there's no income coming into those spaces. So it gets to be a challenge on how are you going to be able to do that? And in some communities, they've turned into municipalities that are taking care of them when they were once other organizations. And this is non-denominational, right? It's going to be for anybody who wants to be buried up there? Okay. So again, I'm still concerned. This is broken out, and there's six lines that are broken out, and maybe everybody's okay with that, but I'm not, because it came to us at 6:30 at a first finance meeting. I've been asking for the breakouts. I had this in my package, the original one, but I didn't have this breakout. I would have expected a little bit more detail even, even from this. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Yang?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, I'm sorry, it's been so long, I don't know which microphone I'm using. Good evening. I, I just want to acknowledge that, I think, for me in approaching this conversation, there's an emotional aspect of it, right? Like folks, I, I think we say all the time that we want to do what we can to keep residents in this city, morbidly speaking. That includes, you know, after their passing as well. I know my family, they all live here now, and we've unfortunately had to have those uncomfortable conversations about which cemeteries in Quincy are available to them. It's very limited, so I'm excited to see, again, on the emotional side, that there are going to be more options here for Quincy residents. On the technical side, to Counsel Mahoney's point, right, it's the financial piece and making sure that we are being physically responsible moving forward. And, you know, we don't know what we don't know, so my questions tonight are really going to be hopefully where you can enlighten me on some things that we just don't know, right, and you do. And so first and foremost, and just looking at the revenue coming in, where do we get those numbers from? Because you say, for example, you know, Dave, you went through sale of lots, these 1,200, perpetual care, 1,000, et cetera. Where do we get those figures from?
The Cemetery Board of Managers sets the fees for both pre-sale. They have recently, last April, they adjusted their fees. They did a market analysis of similar cemeteries and adjusted their fees to the level that they're at today. We use those figures to come up with our revenue projections for this project.
Great. And then do you know roughly before the adjusted fee, I imagine obviously it was an increase in April 2021, do you know how long before then the fees were increased or?
I don't know precisely, Counsel, but I would say, based on where we were in the marketplace, I would suggest it would have been a long time. We were far behind, I think, similar cemeteries when we did our analysis, so we actually had to come up a substantial amount. So I, I'd have to do a little research to get you a specific answer, but I think it had been some time since those fees were last increased.
Okay, I'd be curious to know when that was and then also use that as a predicting marker moving forward, right? You know, however many plots come online, ideally, they're not filled very quickly within a year, right? And I'm curious to know in that time if we can actually, again, based off of inflation, increase those rates over time, right? I'm not looking to gouge anybody, of course, with this, like, I don't want to come into this wicked insensitive or anything. I'm just, I'm looking at the total payment for this and then the total revenue, and we come out with about $590,000 in profit, right? Based off of the current numbers if we don't ever increase them. And so I'd be curious as to see, you know, if there is a potential for increase moving forward with the available plots, that rev, you know, that profit of 590 can just go up from there, right, which would be great. And so the reason why I want to see a bigger number for the profit is because I'm also thinking about construction contingencies, right? And so just obviously with everything going on right now, in the last two years, we've seen, I've seen anyways, and I'm not like the expert in this by any means, but just in having conversations with folks, labor is still exceptionally expensive right now. So aren't parts, right? They're hard to come by and materials and everything, all of the above. Everything we need essentially to do this, right, is only going up. I haven't seen it plateau and start to sort of regulate itself. And so I, I'm hoping, right, with any construction project, we build in contingencies. I would like to know what that contingency amount is. And also, if you can enlighten me on if we are building in typical construction contingencies or if we're factoring in the fact that everything has increased the last two years.
I would, I would, I understand that question, because yes, there's lead time issues, there's inflation issues. So we, we do have a pretty typical construction contingency in there of about 5% to 10% at this stage. We've got such a detailed design that we feel pretty confident now. Granted, things have been changing rapidly, more rapidly than we really probably had in front of you in a sense. We'll, we'll have to see what the bids come back at. We're hopeful that we have a lot of contractors that are, are, you know, looking forward to a project of this magnitude. So we've had a brief pre-bid meeting. We had a good handful of, of potential bidders show up to the, to the meeting, ask a few good questions. There's a good amount of people on the plan holders list. So we're hoping that there's a competitive bid that comes in.
Do you know typically then, when you were having pre sort of conversations with them, what their general, you didn't say, like, I'm wondering, like, okay, historically contingencies are 5% to 10% built into a project, right? Are we adding anything on top of that so we can be a little bit more conservative? Or is this number including a sort of higher contingency percentage? Again, based off of like the world we live in right now, right?
This number doesn't consider a higher contingency, no.
Okay. Is that something that we would consider then? Because I just, again, we only have about $590,000 in profit to work with here, right, with wiggle room? And, you know, should there be, again, you know, based off of the timeline, by the time it goes out to bid for a certain aspect of the project, right? And it's, if it passes that, then, you know, folks are going to be back in front of us asking for more. So I want to prevent that from happening.
Yep. Yeah, understood. I, I think the only answer is to see where the competitive bids come back in at this point.
Okay. And then I guess my last question for you then, and to have a quick question for Eric, is, so then what's the timeline of this? And, you know, you need the approvals, obviously, and then it goes out for, so what's the timeline that we're looking at?
The bid opening is April 15th.
And then after that?
Then there's a contracting process with the contractor, the qualified contractor, which usually takes a few weeks, and then construction can really get mobilized. So probably mid-May. We're, we've kind of told contractors to really kind of plan for after Mother's Day. They can probably start before Memorial Day. You know, we don't want to have to really have construction kick off too, you know, too aggressively before those two holidays, which are pretty big holidays for the cemetery. But, so after Mother's Day, before Memorial Day.
And then when are you looking for, when are you looking for completion?
Yeah, we've, we've considered in our, in our bid documents to allow this entire construction season of 2022, the entire construction season of 2023. So we're looking at substantial completion in November of 2023. You know, whether contractors can do that, we'll see what their work plans come back as in their bids. Whether they have to come back in the spring of 2024 to do final top course paving and final plantings, we'll see. Ideally, they'd get that all done in, you know, the October timeframe of 2023.
Okay. I mean, I like, I love the idea of it starting sooner rather than later, so we don't have a year's worth of lead time for prices that can you decide, right? If that means that we can lock in rates, you know, even with folks who are doing work in 2024, if we can lock in the rates now, I'd much prefer that, right, than to see, you know, prices increase significantly and then for them to bet out significantly higher with you in December than in May, right? So I, I really like seeing that we're, you know, ideally going to start in mid-May a few months from now, rather than giving it, again, a much longer lead time waiting for prices to go up. So I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Just Eric, to you a quick question, what's our current debt to budget ratio?
Good evening, Counsel. Our current debt to budget ratio, when it's supported, supported by just general fund debt, I believe it's about, I'd have to double check, it's about, I believe it's about 6.7%.
6.7%? Do you know off the top of your head, then, what this would do to that 6.7%?
So if this was supported solely on the budget itself, it would add about 33 basis points or 0.33%, give or take.
So it'd be at about 7%?
Yeah, it'd be about 7%.
And what's our, under the financial plan we currently have in place, what's our capacity, with the high end of that?
7.5%.
7.5, so there's a little bit of wiggle room, okay. And then that also obviously includes any debt coming off the books as well, right?
Oh, yes. So we have a, there's always a debt wave, so every, if you look about five years out, there's always a big drop off.
Yeah, okay. No, I, I understand debt does come off on the other side of it. I always just want to make sure we're also not obviously getting too close to the high end as well. That's all I have for now. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I didn't hear the response to the question. I think my colleague was asking about revenue or market rates for plots. Did you have data on that? So these prices that we're going to charge residents for plots and services, what are those benchmarked against?
So we did a thorough analysis before we presented some recommendations to the board in April of '21 compared to other municipal cemeteries and other cemeteries in this region, our competitors, if you will.
Yeah.
And we did an analysis of where we stood at that point, and we were far below those market rates. So even now, we're on the lower end of those market rates. We're not at the higher end by any stretch, even with the increased rates. We're at a place now that I think we're comfortable balancing, covering our costs with providing a service to the residents of Quincy.
Okay. And I, I appreciate the, the line of questioning that both of my colleagues are going down, especially with the, the lack of itemized details here in the budget. But when you look at this, so we're looking at 15,000 more interment locations and at least a construction cost of 13.6, non-inclusive of the Welcome Center and building, we're looking at about 913 per plot, right? But the question that I have is, there's ongoing operations and maintenance to service those plots. So what are we looking at in an ongoing basis to service those plots?
So relative to the new sections, the new seven acres, you know, once the construction finishes, there will be development of that cemetery, there'll be grass cutting, et cetera, there'll be burials. The pre-buried vaults should be a much, a welcomed efficiency for our folks. We spend a lot of times, a lot of time with backhoes actually digging new graves. Having the pre-buried, pre-buried vaults in place will make our work as far more efficient. That's brand new to our cemeteries. We've never done that before. Relative to grass cutting, trimming, et cetera, we anticipate, you know, probably over the course of two or three years, having to add an extra body to keep up on those seven acres.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, no, I mean, obviously, this is a necessary project. It's, there's weird excitement around having such availability of interment plots in Quincy. I know how people consider this sort of, I mean, literally hallowed ground from Mount Wallaston, so having this available at Pine Hills, I think, is a big deal. So I'm certainly in support of it, and I appreciate the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Any other counselors wishing to speak? Counsel Mahoney?
Thank you. Could we just go back to the niches for a second? So what's the percentage compared to the burial grounds, like niches versus ground burial, full burial ground, like regular caskets going in the ground?
Of new or?
Yeah, so you have, I just want to know, is it, is it 50/50? What are, is it?
It's not 50/50. I think, I mean, looking at the numbers, 3,500 double depth pre-buried vaults, 3,000 niches, so it's a little less than 50/50 without consideration of those non-pre-buried vault areas, the veterans areas, a couple of different strategic areas.
It's more niches than it is?
It's not, no. It'll probably be, it'll be more like one-third niches, two-thirds burial, or maybe more 60/40 typical burial to niches.
Okay. And then, just, this is going to sound really strange, but if a person buys a lot, they can put, they can put their, their, the urns into the, how many lot, how many urns could they put into a traditional lot?
Maximum, the maximum burial is three. So you have your two lots and you can add a third cremation urn.
Okay. And that would be explained to people, right? Because that's, that's something that people don't necessarily know. And then, so just, you said you did your, your research on this, and five years ago, cremation rates and burial rates were neck and neck, and now projected for 2020, they look quite different. Burials are projected to be at a rate of 37.5, where cremations are looking at 56 point, 57, 56, like 60, so 60/40-ish. And they are saying that this was, this was, this was done in 2018, this report, and the cremation rate in the United States is expected to increase from 52% to 80% by 2030. So I, you know, this is one of the things that I'd be expecting when we came up, that we would be also talking about things like that. And I realize this is Quincy. I know that we, you know, we, it's, it's, it may be different in, in the New England area, but this is, this is some, I did spend a lot of time talking, again, I, this is not, this is, this is something that I actually do. I talk to, I talk to people in Westwood, I talk to people in Boston. I, I researched the prices that they were doing, I researched the cost. In Westwood, they, they added 1,900, 1,900 burial plots, including niches, for $400,000. It was a couple of years ago. It was pre-pandemic, but it was 1,900 lots now. The same thing could be said when I looked at it and said we had 4,000 for 750. That kind of matched up, that kind of made sense to me, because 4,000 to 750, it kind of worked with what, what Westwood was doing. But now you're saying it was only 500. But when I'm looking at what, what people are predicting, more and more people are opting for cremation, and that is something that's accepted by a lot of different religions. So I, I would think that we wouldn't be, you know, 60/40 going forward, because we're talking about the next 10 years. We'd be looking at potentially putting more niches as opposed to traditional burial lots. What was your thoughts there?
Three, Mr. Chairman, we actually have the ability to add cremation niches going forward, not just at Pine Hill, but potentially at our other cemeteries. So the burial space obviously takes up much more ground.
And we're going to run out of ground eventually, so I was just, I'm just saying.
But the cremation niches, we have other opportunities after the burial spaces are gone to add cremation spaces in the future. So this isn't, I don't think that's the end of the cremation niches. I'm sure that 15, 20 years from now, somebody would be standing right here asking the council for money for cremation niches, because it becomes more.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking for, you're asking, you're coming up before us and discussing something that's very sensitive, obviously. And I realize it's sensitive, but I'm also looking at the investment that taxpayers are, are being asked to make. And I understand when you say, and this drives me crazy in the city of Quincy, when they say, it's a no-brainer, it's going to pay for itself, we're going to go out and sell these. But I've yet to see anything that ever does that. In the very end, you know, whether it's, it's a 20-year bond and you're going to be out of, out of spaces in 10 years, you know, it's, it's a rollover of a situation. You're going to have, this isn't a problem that's going to go away, it's going to continue to grow potentially, because deaths do happen. But really, our goal and my job here on the council, and I respect your job too, Mr. Murphy, and we've, I mean, we've had our differences, but we've had our agreements. But, you know, my job here in the council is to really look at the numbers and say, make sure that we're not, you know, just, we're not just going after another vanity project, that we're really looking at something. It's not just about getting to that 7%, you know, we can, we can spend up to 7% in our debt ratio and be okay. It's really about making sure that we're looking at this and, and valuing the people who are coming to Quincy, valuing the people that are here and keeping them in their homes now, because, you know, we're talking about thereafter, you know? And this money that we're spending, whether we, we like to think that these things are no-brainers and they're going to be a net zero problem to the, to the taxpayers, but there's always something else. There's always something that comes along that costs us more money, or the inevitable, it's, we're taking care of here, but something else wasn't. Did we not, I'm just going to ask this question, did we not add, did we add any spaces to Wallaston Cemetery when we did the work over at Wallaston? Didn't we change some locations over there and add some spaces over there? I know we're probably at capacity, but I'm just curious.
I think we are at capacity there.[1511.11] I think we are at capacity there. I think there were some spaces added some years ago, but I don't know that we're at.
Okay, so, again, in this particular presentation, and this is, this is, this is, it sounds like a criticism, it's just a disappointment, it always is when you come up. The presentations are always lacking in the detail, and then even the questions that you ask, this, this is a cemetery that we're talking about. You started the conversation with all of the cemeteries that we manage and operate, and when I asked that question, you're like, you're not sure when or what happened. It's, I realize you just came in to, to taking this over just a couple of years ago, but at the same time, this is, again, some people can be really comfortable with this. I'm not comfortable with sixteen point four million, sixteen point four million dollars. And I'm also not comfortable with the idea that the cemetery ground expansion construction, is that all we're voting on tonight, is the thirteen points, thirteen point four, that we're voting on the whole thing, right, the sixteen point four? So your breakout tonight for total expenses does not include the total breakout for the two point seven million dollars for the Welcome Center, which is not even in the package that we're saying yes to. So the very thing that Council Liang is worried about, you're saying, "Don't worry about it, we're gonna get it all bid out, it's gonna be all fine," but we don't have any details of what's going in there. There could be places we could save money for the taxpayers in there, but we can't tell, because it's not broken out. And because of that reason, I'm doing, I'm gonna, unless we're gonna not vote on it tonight and come back and give us the details, which is what I'm gonna ask, but I don't, I don't know if many of my other councilors are concerned about that. I am, I'm concerned about that for the taxpayers, I'm concerned about that because we say to the taxpayers all the time, "We want to find a way to give you a residential tax break," but in the meantime, we go ahead and spend money like this, and don't ask for fine details, and that's where you're gonna be able to save your monies, because in every project, you should be able to cut something. And we, I can't, like, and look at this and say, "I'd like to cut, you know, two point five million dollars on the hard, on the, the hardscape enhancement paving." Is it gonna be granite sidewalk, granite, granite on the, on the driveways going in? I don't know. There's, I have no idea, because that's just, there's no way for me to know, because there's no details in this project, so I can't, I can't get behind this. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I, I mentioned this to a few of my colleagues, the last thing I really want to talk about at my age is cemeteries and burial fees and things like that as you get older. But the thing that, you know, this past year, I, I have friends that have, that live in Quincy that struggle to get plots as their family, families are passing, and one was a longtime resident of Squanum, trying to find places in Quincy to place their loved ones. I'm, I'm thrilled that, that the fact that we're opening up more spaces for our residents, and the fact that it's gonna stick to residents, I'm, I'm pleased with that. I respect my fellow councilors who have questions about this, but at this point, I'm satisfied, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor to approve. I think we still have other people that want to speak, I know Council Liang. So I'm gonna leave the motion and allow Council Liang to take, are you done, Council Harris?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Council Mahoney brings up some, some good points, and it triggers some questions in my head. And again, this goes back to, you know, we don't know what we don't know, right? I know how to build a restaurant, and know, like, what designers and, you know, contractors to go to, and we trust that, you know, in the business, you know what contractors you're going to, to build a cemetery, right? So actually, I don't know, right, where these construction costs came from. You said you had sort of preliminary conversations with some companies, and again, you know, referencing other cities and towns who have done this, it's, it's super helpful, because again, I've never built a cemetery, right? And so having that information's helpful. I, could you just tell me some information about the folks you did talk to about getting bids? I would think that they do know how to build cemeteries, right? And they have a history of it, or could you?
Right.
Tell me more about where you got these numbers from?
Sure, sure. And this is, this is gonna be a public bid, so the contractors, you know, we can't say what suppliers to use, or what contractor to use. It's a public bidding process, as you know, I'm sure. But in our construction cost estimating through our engineering, we talked with suppliers about, you know, the pre-buried vaults, about the columbarium niche units, about the granite supplies, about, you know, all the different pieces that are going into this, really, the columbarium walls, the pre-buried vaults, the retaining walls. Those are things that we do a lot of work on, and design on. We do a good amount of cemetery design as an engineering firm in, in the region. And so we used our expertise, we used our expertise of, of what earthwork typically costs, retaining walls typically cost, supplier costs for pre-buried vaults, supplier costs for columbarium walls, working with our landscape architect, industry costs and experience on hardscape enhancements and paving. So it's, it's really just our industry standards and our experience bidding projects recently, as well as talking with suppliers, you know, in the designing process. So.
So do you, like you said, it's, it's an open public process, right, so you can't set that as a requirement, but
Yeah.
Based off of the materials and the design work, and what you're looking for to build a cemetery, they know that's what they're bidding for essentially, right? And the products that they're bringing in, and the construction of it, they, they understand that that's what they're bidding for, and they have experience. And they are able to show you they have experience in building up?
Yeah, yeah. There's, there's qualifications within the specification book that they must meet, so.
So that you can put into the bid, right? Are those qualifications?
That into bid, that they, yes, that they have qualifications, that they can show experience in this type of work. So, and really, you know, it's, it's a pretty sizable project, but it's a lot of earthwork. It's a lot of rock removal, site grading, retaining walls, backfill with pre-buried vaults, which are just concrete, you know, vaults. So it's, you know, maybe something similar to a septic system in a sense. The columbarium walls are pretty intricate, as you can imagine, putting granite faces to the, the storage units that the urns will be in. And the, the hardscape enhancements, the paving, the landscaping, that's all, you know, pretty common work. This is just a pretty big scale for, for an earthwork and site development project. So it's, it's almost a park project, really.
Yeah, again, I just, I, again, personally, I don't know how to build those, right? So if you're already talking to folks, I would hope and imagine that we can build in, obviously, some requirements for experience, extensive experience.
Yes, absolutely.
Especially for a project this size and with this cost. So, again, don't know what we don't know, so I appreciate you elaborating. One more question, and I heard the term net-zero, so it triggered this, this question of, obviously, moving forward, right? We want to make sure anything we're building here in the city, especially, you know, anything that provides an opportunity for us to go into considering any sort of like green infrastructure. So is that something that's built into this as well? Maybe like LED lighting, or anything else, in any kind of way that you can incorporate, is something to provide environmentally, I guess, conscious development here?
There won't be much for, for lighting, really, at the site. There isn't right now, and we're really not proposing any, because that would be, you know, some costs incorporated to running electrical conduit throughout the site, which we didn't want to do.
Even, even better than.
We looked at solar, and we, we do have solar lighting on, on flagpoles.
Great.
And stormwater enhancements for environmental considerations. But that would, you know, I think, again, it's, it's a, mostly in my mind, a park project, and so there's not, yeah, there's not necessarily a lot of electrical components, in a sense.
So not a lot of emissions, obviously, coming out of that space, then?
I, I wouldn't say so.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm gonna go to Council Andronico, who hasn't spoken yet on the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And gentlemen, thank you for joining us tonight and for your presentation. And just looking at the breakdown of the costs that you had expanded on a little bit, I didn't see the Welcome Center in there. I was wondering if that was part of the breakdown that I'm just not seeing, if that's an additional cost.
Right, there's no, there, there isn't a breakdown for the Welcome Center building and committal building. Those two, construction-wise, are the two point five two.
Okay.
So there isn't necessarily a further breakdown of those two, but those two buildings are within that one line up top.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, I just wanted to let you know that I do appreciate all the work that the team does up at Pine Hill Cemetery. I visit quite a bit. My mother is buried up there, and the team does a fantastic job. I also understand that there are plenty of Quincy residents that would also like to have their family members and loved ones buried there as well. So I absolutely believe that the city should be pursuing an expansion. While at the same time, I do understand some of the concerns that my colleagues have raised about some of the details in that, and I do agree with them, that I would like to see a little bit more of a breakdown on what those costs are going to, because anytime there's a spending proposal before us, we do have a duty to the taxpayers to fully explore the options before us, and I would like to see maybe another meeting on this moving forward. But, gentlemen, I really appreciate your time, and thank you so much for the presentation.
Okay. Counselor, Counselor DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your presentation, Commissioner, and your team. As you know, obviously, there's, construction costs have obviously been going up over the last few years, especially this past year. Is this a hard number, it's sixteen point four million dollars? We're not looking to come back to the well again. This'll, this'll do the job, and you'll do it within this, this scope of sixteen point four. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, that's certainly our expectation, Counselor. Like, Mr. Silva, as you said, we're built in a contingency in that. We do have quite a bit of interest from our pre-bid meeting. We do think we've got a competitive project here, so that's always our hope. I don't have a crystal ball, but I think we've done all the work that we can to make that as likely as possible.
And the reason why I ask is, obviously, you know, Public Safety Headquarters, Police Station, obviously, you know, with COVID, we're kind of on the tail end of this thing, hopefully, knock on wood, that we can possibly get into the construction. We get these numbers, and then we have to come back to the well again. We have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of the city on this end, on this well, and, you know, that's why some of our folks have, you know, raised some concerns about projected timeline of when this is gonna start. And for me, if we're looking at a number today, and we're, we're looking, if, if it's approved, we can get underway and start construction on it. Obviously, you said, maybe mid-May, you said, right around Mother's Day, right after?
Yeah.
Because every day that we miss, who knows what's gonna happen out there? And we have to be cognizant of, of that happening, because it's, it's always happening, and it's reflecting every day. So obviously, the feds have raised some rates, and things are changing. We can bring, we can bring our, Erica up here for a long time and talk about that, but that's a whole different story for a different day, but it does reflect on us councilors. So I think it's a much-needed project. I think we need the expansion. I think it's important for the citizens of Quincy, and I relate to my colleagues to the left of me, that folks are looking for, for places for burials, and we're getting very scarce around the city. We have a lot of older cemeteries that really need, and this expansion will help out and alleviate that. That's it for me. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. At this point, I'm gonna go to the, I'm gonna go right to the city council meeting, seven-thirty, and then we'll come right back, and Counsel Harris at that point. Thank you.
I'd like to call the meeting in order of the Monday, April fourth, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
President.
Counsel Kane.
President.
Counsel Harris.
President.
Counsel Liang.
President.
Counsel Mahoney.
President.
Counsel McCarthy.
Counsel Palmucci.
Counsel Phelan.
President.
President DeBona.
President.
Seven members, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Folks, can you please rise?
And please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could please stand, if you could, real quick, give a moment of silence, please. Please use it as you wish. Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're gonna, we're gonna recess, and we're gonna go back into the Finance Committee with Chairman Phelan. Come back in, thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna reconvene the Finance Committee meeting, and at this time, I'm gonna call on Counsel Harris.
Thank you, Chairman Phelan. Obviously, I've heard the concerns of my, my colleagues, and obviously, there are a lot of questions that need to be answered. So at this point, I'm gonna withdraw my motion to approve.
At this time, I think, unless there's any further questions, I'd like to move to put this back in committee, and I'll schedule a meeting at a later time when we get some, there's several answers that have been given out, have been, have been requested. I do, generally, I support building the cemetery, and I think it's a very important thing to do, but I also feel that, that some questions on details and stuff should be answered before we move forward. And I'll, I'll ask Clerk of Committees to forward those questions, so that you can get them, and please present them back to me, and I'll make sure they get to the rest of the councilors. All right? And if any other councilors has anything and they want us to add to that, please let us know, and we can make sure that we have all that information before we have our next finance meeting. So with no other business before the finance, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Back on to the city council meeting. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
Number one, twenty twenty-two dash zero five zero, order nomination and election of the city clerk.
I will now, oh, I'm sorry, I will now accept nominations for city clerk. I'd like to recognize Counsel Phelan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't very quick on those either, Mr. President. It was something new, it was a lot different the last time I did it on the city council. But I, at this time, I would like to offer, offer the name and nomination of Nicole Crispo. She's been here, worked for the city for a number of years, I've worked with her on elections, campaigns, censuses, back in the form of thing, and she's a true professional. She's done a phenomenal job. She is a, she, as, as a clerk, keeping all this done, but also doing the census, doing the elections and everything, and she keeps her team going and pointed in the right direction. She does a, she's, she's a pro. She's a true professional. And I'd like to enter the name of Nicole Crispo to be the, to be the city clerk.
Okay, motion made by Counsel Phelan. I'd like to recognize Counsel at Large, Nina Liang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second that motion, and if I could just say a few words as well. So I spoke earlier, I mentioned, you know, having a history in the restaurant business, and I, I mentioned that again, because that's actually how I've gotten to know the clerk over the years. I've known her since I was a kid here in the city, and the very great Joe Shea took a chance on my family, and Nikki was right there from the very beginning. And, you know, supporting two eighteen-year-old kids and a family who, you know, didn't know anything about how to run a business, really, we have thrived here in the city because of Nikki, and the example that she set in her office to treat not just us, but anyone who comes to this city and wants a chance to succeed. And that's just in one capacity, right, that she cares, not just, you know, in addition to all the other capacities and roles she has, that, you know, Counsel Phelan had mentioned with, you know, the census counts, and making sure that she's inclusive about that process, with the elections and how important that is, whether it's local, state, or federal. I mean, she just, she goes to all ends of the earth to make sure that everyone is included, that we are doing the best that we can as a city to make sure that that's possible. And, you know, people say that all politics and all government is local, but that can only be possible because of folks like Nikki, and again, the example that she sets. We want somebody professional in this role, somebody caring, somebody understanding, and somebody inclusive, and that's who Nikki is. And just personally, professionally, it's been an honor to work with you, it's an honor to, you know, second this nomination, and I just want to thank you again for really putting the city on the map, not just across the state, but across the nation, for how we conduct ourselves as a municipality. So thank you so much for everything you've done, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded by Counsel Liang.
On the motion?
Yes, you may. Go right ahead, Counsel.
I just wanted to declare my love for Nikki. She's, I love her the most out of all the councilors. So she married me in this chamber here, so she's in my wedding pictures. So I appreciate her as a colleague as well. But I'm happy to support you for this role for another two years. I fondly remember when you were advocating for the first time, and go around almost seven years ago, I think, and it's been a treat working with you every year since. Your professionalism knows no bounds. You're always such a, a strong colleague and a great resource. So look forward to working with you for another two years. Thanks, Nick.
Madam Clerk, you've done a fantastic job just coming up here into the city council. When you took over for Joe Shea in April of two thousand sixteen, when you came on here, you've been instrumental on, and helped with everything that you've done up here, especially during these last two years, dealing with the COVID situation that we have here in the city. Getting me underway here in, in the chambers on January, right after the New Year's was definitely challenging, but we got through it, and, and your help, and your knowledge, being besides Joe Shea all those years, you really got a book of knowledge from him, and you've really done a fantastic job, and I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart with everything you've done. You've really done a fantastic job. Thank you. And with that, we, seeing none, I have, is there any other nominations for city clerk?
Motion to close nominations.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan to close nominations. We have a motion on the table for Counsel Phelan, and we got a second by Counsel Liang, for nomination for Nicole Crispo for city clerk. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda.
Number two, twenty twenty-two dash zero one five, ordinance amending the chapter three seventy-five zoning code, section eight point zero, special districts, eight point five.
I'd like to recognize my Counsel, Counsel Palmucci, he's back.
This is a, seeking to change the zoning code to create a special transit-oriented district over in the Senate Street corridor. There's a couple of potential properties up for development in that area, and I wanted to make sure that as things move forward, we give our planning department all the tools necessary to create the best possible development for the neighbors and the residents who live there. So I'd ask that this be placed into the ordinance committee, advertised, and I don't believe, oh, and then sent to the planning department as well.
So we got a motion from Counsel Palmucci to refer to ordinance committee, and then out, if you advertise. Do I have a second? Second by Counsel Liang. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, yes, please.
Any opposed? Do I have anybody? No, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, please, the next item on the agenda.
Number three, twenty twenty-two dash zero five two, resolve opposing the U.S. Veterans closure.
Counsel Palmucci.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a resolution introduced by myself and Counsel Liang. Not sure if folks were aware that the VA, in an effort, as they say, to streamline services and also save costs, are, have a plan that they're vetting to close VA centers throughout Massachusetts, to, to services. One of those impacted that would be closed would be the veterans, I'm sorry, would be the Quincy VA facility, medical facility. So what this does, is a resolution opposing the closing of the Quincy VA facility, calling...
It's Mahoney, she likes to hug the microphone.
Sorry. I think really what the issue here is, veterans are, they already struggle with transportation issues, and to put their medical services further away, I mean, look at the newspapers, Google veteran services, medical care, you know, any time over the last 10 years, and it's, you've 10, 20 years, and you've found problems, deep problems with the medical services they receive. So not only do they struggle to get adequate and good medical services, but this plan would potentially put them further away from that medical services. So the resolution calls on the Quincy City Council to strongly oppose the closing of the Quincy VA facility, calls for the VA to engage in a robust community engagement effort. There really has been no public discussion about this plan thus far. I'm not aware of anything that the VA has done, either in the city or in any of the other communities in which they're closing facilities. So I would ask that the City Council approve this resolution and send a copy of it to our congressional delegation, our federal delegation.
Motion made by Counsel Palmucci for passage, are you going to put it in the committee or are you going to just passage?
All right, we'll do both, yeah, passage, and then we'll throw it in committee too, perhaps Veterans Committee.
Veterans, okay. Counsel Liang.
I'd like to second.
Seconded by Counsel Liang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, I, this is a pretty self-explanatory, I mean, veterans are such an important part of the community, and this gives us an opportunity to step up and fight for them in whatever way that we can, and so I just want to, I thank my colleague for leading that fight and giving us an opportunity to do so. So I'm proud and happy to second this. Thank you.
Any discussion? We'll go with Counsel Harris, go right ahead.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge the two councilors, Palmucci and Liang, for putting this forward, and I think that, I believe it's, the veterans, they go through the Manit Health, which has been serving all of Quincy over the past few years, many years, and I think it's actually, it's travesty that we're the 10th, I think, believe we're the 10th largest city in the Commonwealth, and we wouldn't have a facility where veterans would have to travel. I believe it's the South Shore Hospital, am I correct? If I read it, read that right. That's where, that was somewhere dealing with the South Shore Hospital system, so I support this 1,000%. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Palmucci and Liang, for bringing it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Harris. Counselor Andronico.
Thank you. Just very briefly, the last Quincy Veterans Council meeting hosted at Post 95 in Quincy Point, Director Cuini did bring this up as an issue, and at the time, all the veterans in the room did express concern with it. So I appreciate the actions by Counsel Liang and Counsel Palmucci in putting this forward, and the Quincy Veterans Council will be happy to know that the City Council is taking action on it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Phelan.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I thank my fellow councilors, Palmucci and Liang, for bringing this in. I think it's an important issue. Yeah, a lot of the people seeking services are older, and you're asking them to drive farther, to go farther. A lot of them, you know, I've worked with the Elks in Quincy where you give rides to veterans, and a lot of times, they have to go to Brockton, and it's just the convenience of Manit, plus the quality of Manit, the service they give to the veterans. I think it's important, we have a very large veterans community here in Quincy, and having, and we, it's not just the older veterans, it's people returning back from the Gulf Wars and everything. I've coached these kids, I've had them in my Boy Scout troop, and these kids are in need of services. These men and women who have given their, given their all for the country should be taken care of. So I enthusiastically support this, and it is, it is an important thing, and I thank my fellow councilors for bringing it forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Just a note, you know, having it right next to Manit all these years and allowing our veterans to go there with convenience, being close to the MBTA, whether it be via train or by bus, to take it and obviously have to go to either West Roxbury or Brockton, it makes it a hardship for a lot of our veterans to continue to get their services, especially during these COVID times. It's been such a convenience to be right next door to a place that can do vaccinations and stuff. So I'm happy to support this, and I'm happy that, and glad that Counsel Palmucci, Counsel Liang put this on, and we're looking forward to having more discussions about this in the future. Hopefully, our state delegation can help us out with maybe, and maybe even nationally can help us out with possibly relocating back to Quincy, hopefully, and this does not go through. So we have a motion made by Counsel Palmucci, with the seconded by Counsel Liang. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Eight members.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number four, 2022-053, A Gift for $100 From Copland Package Store, Inc., Fedea.
Do we have a motion to approve here, councilors? Anyone?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Counsel Kane, seconded by Counsel Phelan. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Eight members.
Motion carries. If someone can entertain approval for previous meeting minutes from March 21st, 2022. Motion made by Counsel Palmucci, seconded by Counsel Andronico. Any discussions on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Communication, reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. None, councilors? Unfinished business in preceding meeting. Seeing none. Reports of committees. I recognize Chair, Chairman Phelan for the Finance Committee.
Earlier this evening, we had a Finance Committee on the Pine Hill Cemetery expansion and enhancements, and several questions were brought up by councilors, and we'll be looking to, with the Clerk of Committees, to send those, to get answers to the various council questions. And at this time, when the time comes, we'll schedule, when they're ready and we have the information back, we'll schedule another committee hearing on it. But for right now, that's, it was moved back into committee where we'll stay until we get all the questions answered by the councilors. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other reports of committees? Presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. Any councilors? Motions, orders, and resolutions. Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Phelan.
Thank you. Just wanted to mention a longtime city employee, Jack Doyle, who was a lieutenant on the Quincy Police Department, ran the Betterment Association for years, probably was one, before there was community police officers, he was like a community police officer. He was very into the community, he took care of the memorials and everything like that, and he passed away. He was just, he was just put to rest over at, it was at Sweeney Sunday Night during the wake in the visiting hours. But he was a true professional as a police officer, he loved the city, he was over 40 years for working for the city, and then he was almost that long being the head of the Betterment Association to make sure, like, the Sunday memorials and all that. I worked with him when he was on the job back when I was a City Council before, and even to this, to the last police memorial, he was still coming there, very active in the community, a great police officer, a true professional. He passed away, and I'd like to ask everyone have their prayers for his family. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Scheduling committee meetings and public hearings. Real quick, Jen, do we have anything on that ordinance? No?
No.
No, Counsel McCarthy, no, okay. We got Monday, April 25th at 7:30. Our City Council meetings are back to the 7:30 start time. If any of you committees are willing to do it ahead of it, we can go at 6:30 until we make a move or a vote to change that time. We have a hard time at 7:30, so we can do our meetings beforehand at 6:30. So feel free, chairmanships, if you're looking to do something, we could do it right before at 6:30, and we can also recess. I like to do that like we did tonight. We also have Monday, May 2nd, 7:30, and Monday, May 16th. Do we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made. This is now.